Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tole Mart, called the Tuesday, February 25th, City Council Services, Safety and Parks Committee meeting to order. And the first thing that we have on the agenda for this evening, let me just go to my packet here, sorry, should have had it open already, is public comment. We do not have any members of the public present with us in the room. Chris, do we have any members of the public online at this time?
We have no virtual attendees at this time, Chair Martz.
All right, well, then, we will continue forward then into our next item, which is approval of minutes. Would you care to make a motion, Deputy Council President?
Sure, I'll move that we accept the minutes of the January 28th, 25th meeting.
I will second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes two to zero. By the way, we had, we did our re, what's the word I'm looking for? Musical chairs?
Your organization.
Musical chairs for committees. And out with the old, in with the new, we thank Councilmember Joe for being on the committee last year, and we'll be welcoming back Councilmember Ray onto this group. But neither of those individuals were available this evening, so Barb and I is what you get. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item COM 0089, Flock Camera System, presented to us by Chief Schwann.
Thank you very much. Perfect, thank you. Okay, excellent. So tonight, I'm here to talk about flock cameras. Cameras that are actually been in our city for a couple of years now, and that we have access to, and there's many different jurisdictions around us that are actually using these cameras. So I'd just like to give you an overview of what they are, how many actually are in our state, how many with our local surrounding agencies that they have, what they can and cannot do, some of the misnomers and different things along those lines. Next slide, please. So the direction we're needed from the Safety and Services Commission is, we're asking that the Services Safety and Parks Council Committee for input on the discussion for purchasing flock cameras as a supplement to aid law enforcement in keeping citizens safe. Excellent. So a little bit of background about the cameras. What an ALPR or flock camera is, so an ALPR camera, there's a misnomer, and we've actually had these in the cities for a very long time, more than 10 years. They used to be, and a lot of jurisdictions have them on the cars, on the patrol cars specifically, they look a little awkward, sometimes they look like speakers on the top of the car, but they're actually cameras that are watching all around. So like when a car pulls into, a patrol car pulls into a parking lot, can read all the cameras that are around them. And we did have those originally, when I came on, almost eight years ago now. Since then, and they were very time-consuming because we had to enter all the plates in that came to us, so it was very, wasn't as effective as it could have been. These flock cameras aren't just an ALPR. They don't just read license plates, so that is a little bit of a misnomer. And that's what ALPR, it's an automatic license plate reader. And they use high-definition camera and technology to read license plates, but we are the ones as officers that have to upload and implement those different plates themselves. The first data, first, this data can then be checked again with criminal database in our systems for wanted website, which is our NCIC, which automatically connects to that in our computer systems. And so these cameras are similar, but they're, they're more than just the ALPR. Now, that doesn't mean, and I can tell you what they're not, that's another slide. So, next slide, please. So what a flock camera is not, it's not facial recognition. In fact, the reality is, they get a better read from a car that's on the back end. So, for example, getting a little bit down in my comments, but if we were to put any of those in the ingress or egress of our city, they would be on the rear end facing of the vehicles, and that's what they're looking for most. They read better on the back end of the car than they ever do on the front. And I don't know if that's because they're lower, or what their reasoning is, but they do read mostly from the rear end of the vehicle, so we're not looking to do facial recognition. It does not collect biometric or sensitive information, like fingerprints, like any other facial information at all, or anything specific regarding the vehicle or the persons inside the vehicle more specifically. And it's not used for tracking speed or parking violations. Those, again, are not things that they're used for, that's not what we're recommending. We're not going to use a camera, zoom in and go, oh, okay, there's a parking violation there, now I'm going to send out a car. In actuality, we can't even access these, the ones that we already have access to, we're not allowed to go into those because it's the auditing process, unless you have an actual case number that you're there for. So we would have to have got called on there being a case or a crime in that area, or a report that has a case number before we could ever even access the cameras for anything specific in any of the areas. Next slide, please. So things to know, there's over 69 agencies in Washington to date with active flock camera systems. Total of four flock camera systems, actually, there's a total of four flock camera systems sharing their data with the City of Issaquah Police Department today, but we actually have 10 live flock cameras in the city that are personally owned, or privately owned, I should say. And so, we don't yet have access to those other six, but there are six, or 10 total in the city, and we do have access to four. Flock has a transparency page, I put the link in there, it's on the bottom, I would highly recommend going in there, it gives all the type of data, all the type of information we can look up, all the access and different things that different agencies have ran, as far as stolen plates they've caught initially, initially had contact with, all those different things. Very good page for staff to be looking at and reviewing, to see that everybody would have access that, for that as well, for those of us that would have those cameras in place. And, yeah, it's open to the public, so any of our citizens would be able also to go on there and view the transparency page. There's nothing that we're hiding, to show that we're looking up, you know, your neighbor, nobody can look at your neighbor by having them, that's not the direction, and they're also have a, where they can't zoom into, like windows, that's, that's not the idea either. Audits are easily tracked through the flock system to ensure the oversight and compliance with the actual policy they have in place. Next slide, please. Here is a list of all the law enforcement partners in Washington, which there are a great many of them, and I have a list of actually how many each one of these cities have in place currently, just wanted to show you a large overview of those 69 agencies. Next slide, please. So, current neighboring jurisdictions, which is very important for us typically to see the ones that are neighboring to us, Redmond has 25 currently, Clyde Hill and Medina, it says they have eight cameras, but I know they implemented a bunch more, and I believe there's a bunch more privately owned as well, this is the public-owned ones. Normandy Park with two, Lynnwood has 25, Newcastle with seven, Black Diamond with six, Renton 24, Tuckwillow with 35, and Bonny Lake with 23. And that's just those surrounding agencies, and I know, and I've heard from several of these chiefs personally, that they've been very helpful in a lot of crimes, that they've been able to either catch the people in the act, for example, if we had someone, or one of our cameras on the ingress, egress on South Front Street, as they're coming in off Hobart, by the time, we all know with traffic, especially during certain hours of the day, if someone passed that camera with a stolen car, and they're coming into our city, or they took it and they're leaving our city, we would have access, especially if they were coming into our city, probably before they ever got to Second Ave. Because we would have people at this, if they were at the station or anywhere else could get there, and we could cut them off before they even got very much into our city, because of how traffic is. Now, going out, we would be able to let county know, and/or go that direction, and then let other agencies know too, to catch those individuals, if someone had one of our own people, that were our own neighborhoods, that got their vehicle stolen. So, those are nice pieces of information to have, and that's another piece that they are utilized for. Next slide, please. Local committees supporting or actively utilizing the flock cameras, the HOAs currently that are in support, or currently have, are the Highlands Community, High Grove Estates Association, Montro HOA, and Samamish Bluffs HOA. Current flock cameras in Issaquah that we're actually using for the businesses are Lowe's, Raleigh Properties, and The Woods. And those three have given us access, and there's one more as well that we're working with, as far as that fourth one. Next slide, please. So there's different types of flock cameras, and that's why when you saw these pages, you would see that there were different prices, and I'm going to explain that a little bit. So, for this one, the Falcon, the LPR, it's used for the two-lane roads. So, for example, I already talked about Hobart and/or South Front Street, this would be the price of a camera in that jurisdiction or area, and because that's only a two-lane roadway. The ones that are more expensive, which is the next slide, I can go into this one, but there's a re-occurring fee of the 3,000 per contract per camera year, or damage to the camera or theft, and there's the cost for the total of 800 per camera on that. Next slide, please. This one is for the long-range camera, which is more for the four-lane roads, like SR900 would be one, that we might use that for. And so, this is a location that they would be, and it's more expensive, because it's a wider range, covers a longer distance, and so, this includes permits installation, traffic plans, regular maintenance of the camera system, reoccurring of 5,000 versus the three, damage to the camera or theft, is the same $800 for the camera itself. Next slide, please. So, local Issaquah examples, recently IPD Patrol was dispatched to a theft from a vehicle, a witness provided a license plate from out of state, but did not know which state and a vehicle color. Using flock, another officer was able to find the state, the license plate was out of, and obtain the image of the vehicle from another city's flock camera, which allowed the officer to investigate further. Next slide, please. So some other possible examples of uses of this is when we have amber and silver alerts. So if we have amber and silver alerts that go out statewide, if they happen to come into our city for any reason, or if we ourselves, hopefully not, but if we happen to have one, and we push that out, we could find when and where they left, and what direction they were traveling, which is more data to give any other agencies as well, and track that down. Another is detectives investigating recent residential burglary, we had no leads, the vehicle description was vague, flock cameras would have allowed them to locate the vehicle license plate and pursue the case more efficiently, press providing closure to the victim quicker. The other part to that is, for example, we just had a robbery at Target moments before I came over here, with some juveniles, and the person's at the hospital, we would be able to track some of those at different locations. We did some, we got some information before I came over here as well, and that I don't believe are in our slides, but they did a map, and I'm going to send over that email, because I got that information today, so it was after these slides. But they did a overview, and this is what flock system does, in the event that this is something that you guys approved, or the council approved to go, or to go to council, the committee, it would be that flock would come in, and they can answer so many different questions. They have a representative that has gone to numerous councils, and one of the things that they do is a map of what they would, how many cameras it would take to get every ingress and egress in our city. And I can send you that link, because they have it all mapped out, and they could show you exactly everywhere. And what they're total, this, and again, I'm not recommending this part of it, I think there, it's beneficial to have all the information and scale down versus the other way around, and not know what that would look like. So, if we wanted every ingress and egress in and out of our city, would be 19 cameras. If we wanted every single major intersection, which would be 23 more cameras above that. Again, I'm not recommending necessarily we get that many cameras. Number one, the cost is very expensive, but number two, that I don't know that we have as much trouble in every single one of those areas, in and out of our city, or at those intersections. I can tell you that a lot of intersections and major locations in many cities have hugely benefited, and major crimes have been solved by having some of these. There also has been, you might find when you look up flock camera, I believe it's in Virginia, but there was a lawsuit that was filed, because there was some worry and concern about the fact that if you have too many cameras, what you're doing is trying to be Big Brother and track, like where's someone going, and where they're going to and from. That's not the intent of the cameras, where our intent is to find and deter crime. They put up big signs saying flock cameras, based on that camera and in and out of the cities, so people have knowledge and information. We would put it up on social media and let all the citizens and neighborhoods know that that's what was happening. And that's where they would, even where they would be placed. It wouldn't be that they were secret, or we were trying to hide anything, and then we would have all the audits as well, which anybody, or specifically the committees and/or council, could ask for an audit at any point in time, say, hey, I'd like to know, can you print that up, or show me, give me the link, so I can look it up, and bring those information as a report throughout the year, on how many times we've even utilized them, and then if we've got any leads, or any crimes have been committed, or caught and closed because of the cameras as well. Because then you could do it on a year-by-year basis, to know if they've been beneficial and helpful, and how many crimes they were part of. Can you go next slide, please? So again, the directions needed, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but we're asking, the administration is asking the Services Safety and Parks Council Committee for input on the discussion of purchasing flock cameras as a supplement to aid law enforcement in keeping citizens safe.
So, I'll start off with a question, a couple of questions. I'm not, I didn't see in your presentation a scale, but we, I think you said six cameras was how we, do we, do we have a, are you, do you have a specific number of cameras in mind for a first project, or are we just talking about, generally speaking, are we willing to entertain the concept of flock cameras, or is there a package size you're?
I would say, giving you all the information about, to do all the ingress and egress, we already currently have 10 that are privately owned, and it was just giving you the, I guess, putting out the idea for, to see what the citizens and the council are interested in, not necessarily a recommendation for those specifically, because I think that's, I can make a recommendation, but I think that would be a little bit later time, if the council's something that they wanted to pursue.
Got it. I know that, well, next question would be, in your example that you gave, it involved interdepartmental cooperation. The example that you gave, it sounded like we went, we saw the flock from another, the flock data from another municipality, is that, is that what you said in the example that we gave here, the one with the out-of-state plate?
No, that's what, what that just means is, we were able to run it in our state computer, because we could run it down, and we narrowed down to what the colors were, because, and the plate itself, by the numbers. So we run it, when we run a plate, it doesn't have to be just in Washington. When we run a plate, we don't have to attach a state, we can if we actually know the state, which makes it a lot faster. But if we don't, we can run it and put a generic, like in a region, or we can do it United States-wide, and then we might get multiple returns, but having that information in and of itself without knowing the state, we were able to run that, and because of the flock camera, without even reading the state, and still be able to get a return.
Got it, okay, I misunderstood this. Pardon me. Questions?
I just thought of one while you were asking, and that is, you know, you talked about putting the signs up. How do we communicate to the bad guys and the bad gals that they're also being photographed? Is that how somebody would know, oh, I don't want to go to Issaquah, because they've got flock cameras?
That, they could know that, because if we put a, we can even put the signs on all the ingress egresses, that we could get 19 signs going in and out of the city, but we wouldn't, they would all know. Whole point is for everybody to know. Hopefully, they wouldn't want to come here and do that anyway, but it's pretty well-known that almost all the cities, and even like Lowe's has them, a lot of the different, a lot of the lights with the cameras now you're seeing, some of those now are the flock cameras. And so, they know that law enforcement has access, they know that these people have access. So, they're still committing crimes anyway. This is just a way for us to catch them a little bit faster, or catch them at all, whereas in the past, maybe we didn't have that option. So they deter to go to different cities that don't have as many, or don't have them at all. So that's one of the pieces that we're also considering, in that factor, is trying to deter that crime, and/or have the access to the information sooner, or like some of the other agencies, because if they're come here and they're in someone else's car, it'll trigger immediately on a stolen car. So that's a nice piece. The minute someone reports their car's stolen, we get it entered into the computer system. They literally could go from hypothetically, up in the Highlands, drive around town because they stole someone's wallet, or somebody, or their car, and decide to go to a gas station, and if they pause for, you know, moments' time, by the time our officer gets there and confirms a plate or whatever, it's in the system before maybe they leave the city, well then, we can track that this was then, when they were last in our city, or they haven't left the city yet. So that means we can continue to search in our city, or we know they've left, so we let neighboring agencies know, hey, this car was just stolen, it's headed your way. We can also give that information, and it gives, again, faster opportunity to help those victims get their property back.
Have we done an estimate of, and again, you're not asking a specific number of cameras, but let's just throw a notion out there. You said there were 19, if we wanted all the ingress and egress to the city. Do we understand what the staffing impact would be to, to manage the data stream of those 19 cameras?
So, the one thing about these cameras is, we don't manage anything. We can't look at them, we can't have someone monitoring them, it's not like people are getting tickets every day, hugely different than like, for example, the speed camera over by the school. Not the same, any way, shape, or form. That one, every time there's a ticket, which could be hundreds a day, someone has to monitor and go through all those. We only get the cameras, or go and look on the cameras, that's what the audits was about. If we have someone say, for example, let's say, South Cove has a camera, and we go out there, because somebody's car was stolen, or there was a vehicle parked at three of the houses, and they tell us it was at a certain time of day, we have to have a case number to be able to go in there and attach that to why we would look at that camera. If we don't, we can't be looking at those cameras, we're not allowed. We don't have access to go in there, it timestamps who logged in, what time they logged in, what it was for. And if it's not attached to a case number that actually was a legit case or case number, then we can't, we don't have access. So it isn't like we're monitoring or staffing that on a regular basis, it's just for our detectives, it's another tool in our toolbox to go have access to, if there is a crime that's been committed, or we get reported to us.
Well, so, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not understanding it. I guess I assumed that if a, if a stolen vehicle entered the city, and it registered the license plate of a vehicle that had been stolen, it would send an alert to you guys saying, hey, I've just detected a stolen vehicle.
Correct.
So you would anticipate, I mean, I'm looking at this book, at this Yakima page from December, and it says assisted in 29 arrests, 785 wanted persons, 681 warrants, 58 stolen vehicles, 33 stolen plates, eight violent persons, six protection orders. I mean, that represents work for you guys, right?
Sure.
So do we understand if we were to put 19 cameras in? My, my concern is just, and I, you know this better than I do, we have a small police force, and just to make sure that this wouldn't create an undue imposition by the, by the amount of hits that would be coming in, do we understand what the expected hit rate that we might see on 19 cameras, and are we ready for that, with our staffing?
I would say 19 cameras, no, we are not ready for that. I'm not going to give false information. 19 cameras, no, I don't think we're staffed for that, because God forbid that we have 19 stolen cars, even at one time, that come in through those. And so, it would take a priority, and we would prioritize, and that's what it would look like. So had we had 19 cameras, it would be, and they were all implemented, it would be a prioritization, no different than some of these other agencies that you're seeing, that are smaller but have certain numbers of cameras. They don't have the officers to do 23, you know, Bellevue and different ones, Bellevue's in the process of adding flock cameras as well, they're not on there, because that's not finalized yet. But say Redmond, for example, for the number of cameras they have, if all those hit at the same time, they don't have the staffing for that either. The hope is that, number one, it's a deterrent, and then, number two, in the event that we have them, or a stolen car goes into one of those communities, yes, it triggers a camera or an alert to all the officers and the dispatch center, to let them know that that happened. Now, it's also a property crime, so if we have personal crimes that are going on at the time, they would be prioritized after the fact. So in other words, that stolen car would take secondary to the victim and proper personal crimes that are happening in the city. So that would be how it would be prioritized, and yes, we would have, those were things that would have to be done, in those circumstances, if we had that many cameras.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's a good explanation, I appreciate it. Deputy Council President?
So you kind of alluded to that lawsuit in Virginia, and, so I'm sorry to have to ask you this, but these cameras would not be used to track, for example, undocumented workers, and those kinds of things, I'm presuming. In other words, we're going to define crime as a crime against property, or a crime against persons, but not a crime against immigration law, right?
Correct, 100%.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any more questions before we, because then we would check again to see if we had any members of the public online with us, and then we would go into deliberations.
Let's do that.
Okay. That's what we will do, and Chris, I will ask you again whether any members of the public are with us online?
We have no members of the public in attendance.
Well, then, I will not give my big public comment spiel.
Can I make one more?
Of course.
Brief comment, to your question, Deputy Counsel Barbara DeMichele, we are not going to be tracking anybody. That's not our goal, is to track anybody. So not just undocumented, but we're not tracking anybody by these, it's to give us information on where people entered and left our city last, that have been either committed a crime, or that we were pursuing an investigation, but not, and they're not to be tracking, it's for us to see if we can locate. So that's the difference, and tracking and locating are two different things. So, example, if you got up in the morning, we wouldn't want to track you and find you if you were making it and going, oh, she's late for the meeting, can we track her and see where she's going? They're, they're not intended for any purpose like that.
All right, well, we don't have to, we have no members of the public with us. I will say that we did receive a small amount of feedback from the public, I would say that the light feedback thus far has been positive. I haven't, I have not seen any feedback from the public that would have a negative concern about this, general support for, as this being a fair and equitable addition to public safety tools, should, should we go forward, so. Pardon me. So what do you think for our recommendation back to the administration, and to our fellow council members?
So, yeah, I'm, I'm generally very positive about this, and I did a mini survey of about three people, and they were all, they all gave me positive feedback, and said they thought it sounded like a good idea. So, but, and you know, you've heard this when we were doing body cameras, Chief Schwann, always concerned about the privacy of our citizens, and, and also, I think we're in a very sensitive political environment right now, where there are groups of people in our community who are very, very concerned about surveillance, and people watching them, and so forth. So my thought is, let, let's go forward, and I really appreciate you coming to us with the idea of having a conversation about this, and a discussion, before we get to the point where we actually have a proposal on the table. And I'm just thinking that perhaps we can, you already talked to HOAs and other groups about this, but I'm wondering if you could do a little bit of more outreach in some of the communities that right now are feeling very fearful about what's going on. So, for example, reaching out to the circle, to talk to the Hispanic community, and so forth. And just with information about what this is and what this isn't, I really liked your slide, that was what this isn't, and explaining to people before we get to the point of putting those signs up. Right now, we have a situation, we're going to talk about communications at the council retreat, we have a situation where rumors and conspiracy theories and all kinds of false information gets going in the community before, ahead of us, and I'm thinking, let's get ahead of that and be a little bit more proactive, and talk to different communities that might be fearful, or where conspiracy theories might take hold, ahead of time to explain what we're doing, and then, so that when people, when these cameras go in, people are armed with some information ahead of time, rather than us being reactive after, after the fact. But, you know, I also recognize that some of our minority communities are often the victims of crimes, and would very much welcome another level of security for this community. And so, as I said, I, generally, I think this is a good proposal, and I think that it would be something that we could use, that would be effective tool for law enforcement. So I say, let's go ahead, but let's just think about how we communicate this. In this particular timeframe, in this particular time of history, it might be really good for us to try to get ahead of, of the, of the rumors and the conspiracy theories, instead of being reactive to it. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
What's the old quote, rumors make it all the way around the world before truth gets its, gets their pants on, or something? There's some, there's some quote like that.
Yeah, and I think, I think maybe a year ago, we wouldn't have had this concern, but right now, it, we're just in a very volatile... right now, it, we're just in a very volatile position and environment, I think, everywhere in our country right now, and so I think we just need to be very sensitive and considerate of that. Thank you.
So, for any new public safety technology, I ask myself four questions when trying to assess the value of it. Does it make the public safer? Does it make our officers safer? Does it make our officers more effective? And does it prevent or deter crime? It definitely seems like it would make officers more effective and prevent or deter crime. So, you know, the net positive of this seems obvious to me. The cost seems, seems compared to so many of the systems that are open to municipalities, this seems refreshingly reasonably priced compared to, although, you know, quantities add up and everything. But, this doesn't seem like shockingly expensive the way, say, radios are shockingly expensive as systems. So, I'm very positive. I think that you've pointed out, you've preemptively addressed some of the concerns that people might have. I think that by being, by focusing on license plates, by not taking biometric data or data about individuals, I think that I feel like I can already have a conversation with the public, and that if folks are concerned, we do live in an era where people on both ends of the spectrum have lots of opinions about their privacy and public and whatnot, but this seems to me to be a system that it would be easy to talk to the public about any concerns they might have in that way. Although, I share Councilmember De Michele's idea that we would definitely want to get ahead of this and make sure that, you know, it's far better to prevent rumors from starting than trying to stamp them out once they've already started, so. So, I'm positive as well. City Administrator, do you have what you were looking for from us this evening? Is there other information we could provide for you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Deputy Counsel President. I believe what I'm hearing from the committee is you are all right with us moving forward. As the chief has said, we don't have a specific plan in place, so our next step would be to put one together. There will be a financial impact to that. We will have to assess if that's something we can absorb within current budgets, or if we'll need additional resources, so we'll come back to you with that. So, notification is sufficient. Once we make a determination, would you want us to bring this back to the council? The dollar amounts could very well be within the mayor's purchasing authority, so it would not automatically come back before the council. So, how would you like us, once we have a plan in place, to let you know and let the larger community know?
I mean, that's a good question. I think one of the things that is informative, surprising and informative, is the fact that there are Flock cameras already out there in the community, and this hasn't, this isn't an issue that's been, become a problem, and that's even Flock cameras in private hands, right, that don't have necessarily the same transparency or, you know, data auditing that we would require. Councilmember De Michele, and as part of our council leadership team, how do you feel about this question about how this comes back?
Wow. I, you know, I think I'm fine with it just being a notification. We have a good case that's been put forward for doing this, and I feel like I could explain why we were moving ahead, so let's do it that way.
Agreed.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
And I'll be ready to, if it comes back on consent, I'll be ready to discuss it in my report if somebody on the council wants it.
And our plan would not be to take it to the full council.
Oh, and even on consent, just?
That, if you would like us to, we could.
Just notification, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we would just notify via email?
That's fine.
Very good. All right, thank you, appreciate it, and thank you.
Chief, thank you so much for this presentation this evening. I think it was very, very effective, particularly the Yakima reference information, really helpful to see how another city has implemented. I note that they've seen a reduction in stolen cars over the last few years. I would also like to see a reduction in the number of stolen cars.
Thank you for having me. Also, I will forward you over that email as well, I'll forward it to Mr. Grabowski about the clerk, to forward to you guys regarding the mapping that they have for the intersections and/or all the ingress egress for our city. So then, you would have a little bit more data also on, and to City Administrator, so that way, everybody has access of information and can see where they may want those, as well as I'll put some data with that on where we've seen the majority or most traffic happening, to where it may be that would be most beneficial for the recommendation.
Great. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
And City Administrator, since you've indicated you have everything you need from us, we're going to consider this agenda item done. Deputy Counsel President, do you have any announcements?
I do not.
I do not as well, so therefore, we are adjourned.
Adjourned.
Adjourned at 7:07 PM. Thank you for those watching at home.